indicate that you are virtually remotely attending this meeting and what state township and county that you are in. Trustee Cusamano?
Trustee Frank Cusamano appearing remotely in McComb Township, McComb County, Michigan, State of Michigan.
Thank you. Trustee Lucido?
Peter Lucido, remotely from McComb Township and McComb County, State of Michigan.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver?
Trustee Oliver, McComb Township, State of Michigan, McComb County.
Thank you. Trustee Nevers?
Yes, Trustee Nevers remotely from Northville, Michigan, in the county of Wayne, State of Michigan.
Thank you. Treasurer Gillette?
Thank you. Treasurer Gillette virtually remotely attending State of Michigan, McComb County and McComb Township.
Thank you. Clerk Posey attending remotely from McComb Township in McComb County, State of Michigan. And Supervisor Viviano?
Supervisor Viviano is attending remotely from McComb Township, Michigan, McComb County, State of Michigan.
Thank you. All members are present.
All right. Moving on to approval of the agenda items. Clerk Posey, are there any additions, deletions or corrections?
At this time Supervisor Viviano.
So is there a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Supported by Nevers.
As a matter of discussion point on the on the agenda items.
We'll get to vote on the approval of the agenda.
Do you want to get to discuss it first before we roll?
Motion.
Yes.
Okay, let's discuss it. My apologies.
Sorry.
I do want to point out one thing. Some of my fellow board members have asked me questions regarding the legal counsel. This will be the first item tonight. I want to thank all of the legal counsel, RFP respondents, all of the people that we interviewed tonight were great, or not tonight, but over the course of the search, were great attorneys. One of the things that should be noted is that every law firm had attorney in it that had personal connections to either a member of the board or a member of the search committee in one form or another. Either we did business with them in the past, they represented us in the past, I myself was represented by one of the attorneys. They have friends of ours. It is the legal community in McComb County especially is a very close knit, small group of people. We discussed this at length. It was stuff that was brought up with our purchasing specialists. All of us filled out a conflict disclosure form to the purchasing specialist and all of those things were fully vetted before we made a decision. That's all I have to say on that matter at the moment. So given that, is there any other discussion on the agenda items tonight? There is a motion by clerk, I'm sorry, Treasurer Gillette supported Clerk Posey to approve the agenda. Clerk Posey would call the roll.
Yes Supervisor. Trustee, I'm sorry Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion carries. So we are now opening up the floor for public comment. We remind all of the residents that there is a three minute time limit. Mr. Ivanowski, can you please open the floor for anybody that wants to comment?
Yes, Mr. Viviano, the floor is open and the first person that would like to talk is Tom Sokol. Mr. Sokol, you're on.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom Sokol and my address is registered with the clerk's office. Definitely appreciate the opening comments from the supervisor. However, you know, in the spirit of transparency for the residents, you know, some relationships are different than others and this is something we want to highlight because we're not trying to go backwards here as a community. I think everybody respects the right to try to do things with new leadership and have things the way that they want to have it. However, let's talk about some of these relationships. Some of them go back many, many years and the way this is being structured with one of the forums in particular, you have an attorney that has nothing to do with that law firm being structured as part of this deal, joining up with a firm he has nothing to do with. And to me, it just has county leadership written all over it because of some of the those connections and some of the influence there and it's in a package which I'm hearing is around $30,000 a month. And I was the first person to maybe challenge the previous attorney because I thought that was high. And now we're paying $30,000 a month plus an HR plus hourly for a labor attorney? This is just expensive. It's getting outrageous. If you recall, I was told, many of us were told years ago by very credible sources in our township that there was an attempt by our clerk by any means necessary to bring in the Tomlinson Law Firm due to historical relationships with that, with our clerk. And now this is kind of all falling into place on why the clerk and so many others worked so hard against the previous attorney. So I'm concerned about this. I want to disclose that I'm worried about one of these board members whose family is in a criminal matter being represented by one of the firms being looked at today and this was not disclosed. This was not disclosed to many board members as recent as an hour ago and now there's going to be a vote for this firm that may be in charge of the sentencing of said family member after the fact, after they're awarded the vote. So you know, this, this is what we're trying to get away from. This is expensive and it feels like, it looks like we're turning into North Roseville. So I appreciate the time today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Ivanowski, is there any other comments?
Yes, there's Rob Huth, I believe it's pronounced.
It's Huth. Good afternoon. Rhymes with truth. How are you doing tonight, board members? I wanted to thank Janet Solomon, the second time I've been involved with something in the township that she's led. And again, A-plus effort with her leadership and the board members that participated in the committee meeting. I thought it was transparent. I appreciated getting the heads up with the scores ahead of time, very well-run process and thank you for allowing us to be a part of it and watch as it moves forward. So good job, board, and good luck going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huth. And once again, as I told you before, your presentation, your firm's effort to join us here in McComb Township is greatly appreciated. We think very highly of it. Mr. Ivanowski, is there any other comments?
We have one more resident that wants to talk. It's Mr. James Jelios. Go ahead, Mr. Jelios.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Jim Jelios, resident, former deputy clerk for the township. Regarding tonight's agenda items, I just want to say that this is outstanding news. Many of us have waited for this day to happen for a long time. Finally, a new board of trustees is now able to correct the past mistakes of the former board regarding the HR/ legal counsel dual role contract. It defies logic to explain, expect one person to do two separate jobs. Time has proven this to be true with all the documented problems it caused, such as good people resigning, threats and harassment towards employees, et cetera. The old board has been told since 2017 that the sweetheart contract drafted for those positions was a huge mistake, but they refused to listen. Many of us residents spoke about this problem at several board meetings over the past three years to no avail. However, today we get to see a huge improvement regarding this issue finally come true. We now will have a real professional HR director and separate legal counsel, not associated with some of the past issues or people that have plagued our township. I also think a shout out is in order for Cheryl and Arft, HR specialist, who I'm certain has worked the past three years with little or no help in that department. I'm sure she will be looking forward to actually working with a professional in her field. I'm sure all the employees will be much happier now than they have been in the past several years. Between the recent appointments for the ethics committee and now tonight's proposed hires, we are finally moving forward from the past incompetent leadership to real professionalism in our elected officials. How absolutely refreshing this is. So in closing, let me just say outstanding job, board members. Thank you for working to restore our faith in our elected officials that has been absent for past several years. Keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jelios.
Mr. Jelios was the last speaker wanting to talk.
All right. Seeing as there are no more comments, we will close public comments and move on to new business. First item is the legal counsel services from McComb Township. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Dan Kelly as the labor law attorney from McComb Township.
So move.
So Mr. Kelly's firm, the Kelly Law Firm, put in a response to our RFP. The committee looked through all the RFPs and we selected Mr. Kelly's firm to interview. And we were all highly impressed with this level of experience. Mr. Kelly himself has been an elected official and is an elected official, has been doing municipal law for, I believe, approximately 30 years. Mr. Kelly, correct me if I got that timing wrong. Throughout the process, Mr. Kelly demonstrated a firm grasp and in-depth knowledge of all of the labor issues that our township faces on a regular basis and the committee ultimately decided that he was the best candidate that would handle our legal matters going forward. Mr. Kelly, would you like to expand on that at all?
Well, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Yes, I want to point out what Mr. Huth has already said. It was a very professional experience with the township up to this point. It was well handled and I do appreciate the opportunity to submit our bid. I look forward if the board is inclined to approve us, working with you and working through all of your difficulties. You got the summary about correct. I've been an attorney for 30 years. I primarily represent townships and I do the labor work currently for five different communities, all within probably 15 to 20 miles of McComb Township. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. So in addition, I just want to add on, Mr. Kelly's rate was $160 an hour. The proposal he put forward, everything he would handle would be on a straight hourly basis. That was very competitive. Other firms that only bid our labor were at $175. And with that, I am, I am very convinced that Kelly is the right man and the right firm to handle our labor. Are there any other discussions from the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment. One of the aspects of having an HRL, I'm sorry, an HR director would be that we, no disrespect for Mr. Kelly, I think I've had some contact professionally with his firm, that we wouldn't be needing his services quite as often. So there's yin and yang here that should be taken into account. And I understand that he wasn't, that he was the lowest bidder of the firms that bid for just the labor component of our legal expenses, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to point out one other thing that I forgot to mention earlier, that in the course of our discussions amongst the five members of the committee, one of the things that became apparent was that all five of us sought value in having a completely separate firm handle our labor issues than the attorney that would be handling our daily, whether it was land use issues or prosecutions. In the past, we have realized that when it comes to things like the contract negotiations and arbitrations with employees, sometimes those things can be personal and sometimes the personal can spill into it if the areas of presentation were to be mixed with our daily obligations. So that was also a big draw for us to engage the Kelly firm in this circumstance. Hearing no more discussion, there is a motion on the floor by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to engage the Kelly firm.
Mr. Chairman, if I might amend that to incorporate, I reference the fee agreement, the agreement for professional legal services that was submitted by Mr. Kelly's firm would be ratified, would be authorizing to give you authority to execute that on behalf of the township.
Thank you, Mr. Cusamano. Motion on the floor is to permit the supervisor to execute the services agreement at $160 per hour with the Kelly firm to represent us in legal matters. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido. Clerk Posey would call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Trustee Nevers?
Nancy?
We have lost connection.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, I dropped off this Zoom conference for several minutes. I believe I left with.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Nancy.
Okay. I'm voting yes.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Nevers.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes.
Thanks, Nancy.
That motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you very much. Look forward to it.
You too. All right. Moving on to the second part of our legal counsel services, I'm looking for a motion to appoint the joint, well, to accept a joint proposal from York Dolan and Tomlinson and Aloya and Associates to handle our general municipal work.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
So again, on behalf of the committee, I want to point out that this was a very difficult decision for all five of us. We had a lot of very good firms who put in responses and put in applications to the RFP, all very highly qualified, highly educated, thoughtful and intelligent attorneys. We believe many of them had the background and ability to handle our work. At the end of the day, really, it really came down to which attorney group we decided was the best fit for McComb Township on the whole. Certainly, the financial aspect of the arrangement was a consideration, but speaking for me personally, it was not the only consideration. I personally believe that value is not based just on dollars, but on the services, services that are rendered and the benefit that we will derive as a community from having good, solid, thoughtful and ethical representation. We chose the Ben Aloya and Aloya Associates who will be handling largely our land use issues and in conjunction with York Dolan and Tomlinson, Mr. Tim Tomlinson will be handling our general municipal work. We were convinced that they were the proper combination of attorneys along with Mr. Kelly to move our community forward. So leaving that, Mr. Aloya, did you have anything you would like to add at this time?
Yes Supervisor Viviano, thank you very much for that introduction. I also would like to thank the committee for the thorough process. It was extremely professional. The questions had depth and substance to them and really got to the heart of our qualifications. We felt extremely comfortable with the committee and I also want to thank Janet Solomon, who was a tremendous liaison for the township and she was, we were able to work with her to get all the information the township needed. We are very excited about the opportunity to represent McComb Township. I have a firm in Mount Clemens that practice in McComb County since 2002. Tim has practiced in McComb County his entire career as well. Each of us have over 20 years of experience representing municipalities of various nature and private businesses and we're based in McComb County. Our families are from McComb County. I live in Shelby Township, just down 25 mile road. So this is very important to me. I've been monitoring the things going on in McComb Township for a long time. So as Tim from afar, we are very excited about the new leadership in the township and working with the current administration, which I've had wonderful experiences with over the years. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the, that the board has, but just want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aloya. Mr. Tomlinson, would you like to add anything to that before we?
Thank you Supervisor Viviano. I concur wholeheartedly in Ben's remarks, Dan's remarks and Rob's remarks. The process followed by the township was impeccable. I've been through numerous RFPs and request for proposals in various municipalities throughout my career. You know, my career has been focused exclusively on governmental work. 90% of it is dealing with municipalities and authorities and it's 90% based in McComb, McComb County. I'm proud to be, proud to be a representative in McComb County and represent so much of the citizenry because that's really what we're here to do is represent the citizens and their interests along with the board and the administration. It is going to be a great pleasure, we hope, to work with your administration. I know personally, a number of your department heads haven't been around your community for a long time and we're really looking forward to being part of the team to help McComb Township continue to move forward. And if there's any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. So now I turn it over to the board. Do we have any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion?
Mr. Supervisors?
Yes.
I just have a couple of comments on the situation. First, I want to echo your statements about the process and also the quality of the applicants that submitted RFPs for the proposals. I knew when we as a board dissolved the joint position of HR and legal that we would end up separating those out and that would incur additional costs instead of having one entity try to provide both. We were going to separate into a separate HR situation and a legal situation and that would result in higher costs and I accepted that. We then went through the process of interviewing firms and requesting RFPs and the selection process and I greatly appreciate the sincerity that everybody on that process, both the attorneys that applied and the people in the selection committee invested in that process. And I thought at the end, we ended up with a couple of firms that I thought would do a really fine job representing our community. Among them is the firm that ended up being selected. But I believe that among those firms that I thought could do a very good job for us, there were less expensive options that could equally well represent our community. So I will be voting no on this vote, not out of disrespect to the attorneys that were selected, but more because I believe that, that cost is a factor and that we could have been represented at a lower cost for also quality services. So just wanted to make that statement moving forward.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Thank you. Anybody else on the board would like to comment or add to the discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions and this would be directed to either of the two attorneys. How did the joint proposal come about? Specifically, did you ever consider submitting separate proposals? And could you describe that process by which the firms talked with one another regarding putting together this joint proposal?
I'd be happy to answer that. So Tim and I have known each other professionally for a very long time. In fact, when I started practicing in McComb County, I was an associate for Joscha Matero, who was partners with, with Tim Tomlinson and Jack Dolan. And Tim and I spoke, and in fact, for years, Jack Dolan and I shared the Department of Roads account and I maintained that account. It was the Road Commission of McComb County at the time, but we split that account. But for, for almost decades, Tim and I, who remain friends both and professionals who work well together, always said when, if there's a right opportunity to bid on an account together, we're going to look at that. And we've had conversations over the years of various potential opportunities, but this seemed to be the right one. And so when the RFP came out, we discussed it and said, let's do this together and we felt that it was stronger as a team to be able to divide up the duties and, but of course, because of our long working relationship, because of our long-term friendship, I think that we realize that we will work as a team and there's a benefit there too because of the way we work together. So that's really, yeah. Tim, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
No, you hit the nail on the head, Ben. The other thing is, Mr. Cusamano, we have had these type of relationships in the past with some of our municipal clients. I think that really the areas that we are focused on, although we both have experience in all of them from a municipal standpoint, we feel that it really draws upon our strengths and why we think that this is really a win-win for the community. I think that's, I think we've seen it work and we think it's going to work out fantastic for your community. And quite frankly, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a means of support for each other in the event there should be a conflict or whatever the case may be. The reality of it is, is all of the firms, all of the McComb County firms that you had come before you have done work in McComb Township for years and on occasion, because of that past work, there may or may not be conflicts and I can easily step into a situation where Ben may have had a previous relationship and vice versa that has to be disclosed. So although we don't anticipate that happening frequently, it is just another added benefit of taking the team approach.
Okay, as a follow-up to that, to either of the two attorneys, have you ever submitted an RFP jointly with these two firms together for representation of a municipality? Or is this a first, you've described that you talked about it. Is this the first time you've launched this type of single contract between the two firms and a municipality?
Actually, no, it is not. Although it wasn't through the RFP process necessarily, we did split the road commission account for years. When Ben was originally with another law firm and then subsequently split off, that relationship continued for quite some time where we worked together in handling that account. Have we submitted a joint bid together from the get-go? No, but we've been working together on accounts for years.
And you don't currently represent a municipality with a joint agreement similar to what's been proposed?
I do, yes, I do. Both Clinton Township and, and the city of Grosse Pointe Woods.
Not with myself, Mr. Cusamano, but he shares that with other attorneys.
Okay, so you talked about it and then you decided to submit this joint proposal. What was, do you have any basis for the RFP, which seems to indicate singular proposer, vendor, authorized partner or partnership or duly authorized officer of the corporation singular for submitting a combination of two law firms for this RFP?
I'm not sure what your question is, Mr. Cusamano.
Reading the RFP, can you point to any language which allows for a joint proposal? Reading the RFP, can you point to any language which allows for a joint proposal for legal representation in the RFP? I know that you two firms could have done it separately. And I understand from your statements earlier that you believe that there's a synergy there and a economy of scale, et cetera. But I'm specifically looking at the RFP and everything seems to be in the singular.
What?
And not contemplating.
I'm sorry.
The RFP not contemplating a joint proposal by two firms.
Mr. Cusamano, I don't think it prohibited it anywhere. And I know we reviewed it for that language. It did not prohibit it. And we also provided separate corporate submissions that were part of the RFP page. We both signed on behalf of our own separate firms. So we added two pages there. I signed on behalf of Aloya and Associates. Mr. Tomlinson signed on behalf of York Dolan and Tomlinson.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just would like to also reiterate what's already been stated. With the HRLR Director without benefits, assuming that he takes the maximum allowable contribution for retirement benefits, we're talking $112,200 a year without his health care. This contract calls for $360,000 at a rate of $30,000 for 12 months for annually. That's $482,000. Add to that the Kelly Law Firm. These services were provided, albeit not to the satisfaction of the township residents in the amount of $257,000 by the previous attorney slotted in this position. I understand that there was going to be more additional expenses. However, we're talking about a multiple of two, almost two times to three times as much, depending on the billable hours. And I want to just reiterate that there is a strong possibility that the HRLR Director will mitigate future litigation expenses from the Kelly Law Firm. However, as a fiscal conservative, I cannot justify this expansion of the, of the expenses for legal services. I will be voting no on this matter on that basis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusamano. At this time, Erica Shell, can you, can I ask you a couple of questions? Unmute your mic. Erica from Bodman, can you hear me? There you go. Not to put you on the spot, Michelle, can you, how many different attorneys are on our file from Bodman that you're aware of? She does look a little frozen.
Four. At least five.
Losing you a little bit. At least five, I believe that actually the number is six. Include your associates. We lost Erica. My point was that, yeah, it was.
Yeah, so we have.
Nope, we lost it. All right, I'll move on. To your point, Mr. Cusamano, I fully appreciate the responsibility to be fiscally responsible with taxpayers' money. What I have learned through our representation with Bodman is that our legal matters were in such a disarray that it was actually costing us considerable more money in litigation and potential penalties. And the results of litigation were going to be very expensive by not having the right people in place at the township. I do hope by having a fully qualified HR Director that we will not have to lean on Mr. Kelly as much as we not had some of Mr. Tabata's abilities, which we'll get to in a moment. But we will, we do have, we have three different bargaining units to renegotiate this year. So we are going to be needing Mr. Kelly's services quite often, unfortunately. Again, to your point, I personally believe that what we have put forward is a value proposition. Mr. Aloya, Mr. Tomlinson, I believe, will handle our manners in a way that will allow us to conduct business here in the township that will prevent us from reading the cost of litigation, prevent projects or allow us to avoid projects from getting behind and to actually clear the backlog of legal matters that has built up over the past four to five years. With the right people in place, I believe in the long run, it'll actually cost us less, even though the investment seems like a good cost. In addition, I do want to point out that I did my own due diligence and I looked at communities of similar size. Canton Township, for example, where we get compared to quite often. Another very fast growing township. Their legal matters, their legal bills over the past three years were between, if I recall correctly, between $450,000 and $480,000 each year. And that was just in legal, not including HR. And speaking with the supervisor in Shelby Township, their legal matters, he told me were in excess of $400,000 every year. I believe that the RFPs that have been put forward by the committee, at least the applications, the candidates, the RFPs, are a very good value for our township on the whole. Never claimed that they were the least expensive, but I wasn't looking for the least expensive. I was looking for the right people to handle our legal matters in the most effective and meaningful way possible. So that's all I have to say.
I'll add in really quickly that Erica let me know that she has called in and hers is the phone number ending in 4351.
4351?
Yes.
Mr. Ivan Askey, can you make 4351 available?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Reverend. Hello, Erica.
Hi, everyone. Sorry about that.
So I think I already sort of answered your question for you, but I just wanted you to, if you could speak to exactly what Mr. Hollitt spoke to the other night regarding the scope of legal services that Bodman has been providing for us.
Yes, I believe you corrected me. I thought we had at least five and you reminded me that we have six. We have two covering the criminal docket. We have Jake handling many of the common, you know, municipal law type questions. But then we also have employment specialists and someone dealing with planning and kind of issues with Mr. Van Tiflin and his department. So that's, you know, a good handful of people with a variety of specialties attending to those matters. And the the numbers there, I think what they add, and I think I heard Mr. Aloya speak to this, is a flexibility to be responsive to your needs in a, in a super timely fashion and make sure that you guys are getting the answers you need quickly.
Thank you. Just in your opinion, the situation that we are emerging from and a single attorney trying to handle all the needs of the township, do you think that was an effective use of township's resources?
I do not. And even just to use the, you know, to use the criminal work as an example, one or two people cannot be handling all of that and answering your calls or emergent needs at the same time because they're, for example, in court. So I don't think it would be wise for one person to be doing all of that on their own.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your, sorry, sorry about the technical issues.
Oh, it's okay.
All right, sorry, I went off on a little bit of tangent. Anybody else on the board have any comments at this time?
I do have a comment if I could. You know, from a fiscal conservative standpoint, when we talk about spending hospital two times, you know, one and a half times, two times in legal fees, I'm a firm believer of you get what you pay for. Maybe that's just a quick way of saying just like, if all we hear about are the negative aspects of the previous board and the previous, you know, representation, maybe we weren't even getting what we were paying for in that respect. And I understand it was a cheaper amount. But let's see, and let's give this a chance and see where we go from here. And we're not married to this like we were under the previous contract. You know, if we don't like what we're getting, we don't see the value, we can make a change. So I think that's something that we need to understand is let's give this a chance and let's get off on the right foot. And maybe we weren't spending enough because we weren't getting the proper representation.
Thank you, I agree, Mr. Lucino.
One quick clarification. I don't know that myself, at least, was arguing that the previous situation was ideal. I was expecting that we were going to have to pay more to get the kind of representation that we need. It was more about the various bidders for that change, that's all.
I understood that, that's what you meant.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question that was raised by the comment of the, I believe, the Bodman Law. Can anyone tell me how many cases specifically are being held on the criminal docket in 41A District Court per week? And how many civils for ordinance violations are being held in the 41A District Court? Or are we just untethered from the actual?
Ms. Shell's been handling them.
Yeah, so the numbers do vary pretty significantly. For example, you know, Memorial Day weekend, you could expect to see a way higher number of OWIs. I would say, I have been attending to those matters personally and Mondays and Tuesdays are generally about a dozen matters on each day, sometimes higher, up to 20. Those include a small handful of zoning. It's usually one or two on each of those dates, but it has occasionally been up to five on the same day. And then Friday is traffic matters only, which have a way higher volume, 15 to 20 matters, sometimes higher. But those are significantly less complicated and less time intensive than misdemeanor matters.
And as I understood it, there was a separate law firm that was handling those matters based on a contract which Mr. Assorti was able to, or authorized rather, to engage the township with.
To clarify that there was no contract, Mr. Assorti unilaterally awarded that work to a separate law firm, that is correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
I have a quick question, just a comment. Number one, the committee did really work hard on this. And thanks to the committee for doing all this, going through all the RFPs, going through the interviews. But I can really understand the comments that were made about the fit. It's, it's just like in business. I'm in agriculture. So when we seek out to buy machinery and equipment, we get the fit for our farm. The next, the next operation might not even use the equipment we're using. But it is the fit. And that that follows with everything in business. The legal people, the right equipment you buy, the right people you hire. And that's what we're doing today. We're getting the right fit for this community. And it's not always about dollars and cents, but it is something we have to be aware of. And Mr. Cusamano and Mr. Delet, I can understand that, I appreciate that actually. But we do have to, we do have to be aware of making it work for us. And Mr. Lucino, you made an excellent comment by saying, if it don't work, we could, we could do something about that. This is not a lifelong contract. Okay, we're going to work with these, with this group. And if it works, we go from there. If it don't work, we make decisions and go from there. So basically, I trust that our supervisor and the committee have really worked hard on this and has given us good information. I wasn't in on that then, but I watched all the videos of the interview and they were great. They're outstanding actually. So we did have a lot of people that were good candidates. But these candidates come to the top and I'm going to support this group right here. So that's my take.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, this is Trustee Nevers, can you hear me?
And Trustee Nevers, please continue.
Yes, I would just like to say that I agree with both Treasurer Drollet and Trustee Cusamano. I believe, I watched all of the interviews and I thought they were excellent. But I just believe that being, again, a conservative Republican, and I just, I just think that I'm going to have to vote no on this respectfully. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, Trustee Nevers.
Mr. Chair, if I may real quick, I know this has been very long, but I would just like to say I was a part of the previous board. I'm the only one on the board now that was a full time elected official with the previous board. I experienced everything from legal and HR. And my goal all along has been to find the best people to fit the needs of the township, to work with the board so that we appear professional and we handle things in a professional manner and also assist our department heads and our citizens to the best of their ability. We were very fortunate to have several law firms put in for the RFP, a lot of things to offer us. And my goal again is to just make sure that this board operates professionally and I'm satisfied with the selection that we've made this evening.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Your last comment before we call for a vote?
Mr. Chairman, I got one question. There's no automatic renewal provision in this agreement. I understand that this matter will come back before the board annually for authorization to continue the legal services under this contract.
I do not recall there being an automatic renewal. Mr. Lawyer, Mr. Tomlinson, can you comment?
There is a provision for a two year extension after the first year and a second two year extension after the third year. But the first year is not an automatic renewal. There's actually a provision in there for review after six months as well by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that answers my question.
Okay, so if there's no more discussion, there is a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucino, to authorize the supervisor to execute the contract for legal services from the joint proposal given to us by Aloya and Associates and York Dolan and Tomlinson. Clerk Posey, we follow all.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Lucino?
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
No.
Drollet, our Treasurer Drollet?
No.
Clerk Posey, yes? Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, the motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Aloya, Mr. Tomlinson. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, everyone. The feeling is mutual.
Looking forward to getting to work starting tomorrow.
All right, so moving on to item number four, our Human Resources Director Employment Agreement. Is there a motion to adopt the agreement with Mr. Jeff Tabaka?
So, so, board?
On behalf of the selection committee, which consists of Clerk Posey, myself and Trustee Nevers, we. we reviewed applications from over 50 different candidates. We selected a handful of them to interview. Out of the interviews came Mr. Jeff Tabaka. Tabaka comes to us from extensive background in HR in large companies, most recently with Luxing Gate, located right here in Detroit. He is very familiar with the union bargaining environment. We spoke to him on two separate occasions, and we are convinced that Mr. Tabaka is the right person that is going to help us move forward and allow us to help the HR department, specifically a professional and a more meaningful part of our operation here at Town Hall. Do any of the board members have any questions or comments, Mr. Tabaka, he's on the line with us?
Yes, Supervisor Viviano, I would just like to, number one, thank you for allowing a part-timer for many years to be a part of this process. It was eye-opening. It was interesting, very enjoyable, and I'm very happy with the selection. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Anyone else?
I got one quick question.
Clarification for me or for Mr. Tabaka?
You.
Okay.
Will this, this position be non-union?
So this is an at-well position, is described in the contract. One of the very few non-union positions we have here. Tabaka's aware of that. Rebecca, if I could trouble you for a moment?
Sure.
Rebecca is the attorney from Bodman who drafted our contract with Mr. Tabaka. Earlier this evening in speaking with some of the trustees, one of the trustees would like, let me just turn it over. Mr. Cusamano, could you address your question directly to our attorney from Bodman who directed the contract?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to first state that I reviewed the resume and the interview, recorded interview with Jeff Tabaka. I find him to be highly qualified, competent, and will be a laudable human resource director, a valuable. I'm sorry, I can't read my own handwriting. And I want to thank the selection committee for all their hard work in bringing this candidate forward. Rebecca, specifically, I saw a conflict or an inconsistency or ambiguity between Section 2.4, last sentence, likewise, the township may terminate the human resource director's employment at any time with or without cause or advance notice, which is consistent with the earlier saying that it's an at-well position. But I found difficulty in jibing that with Section 6.2 at page five at the top of the page, which reads, "If township asserts cause under section subparagraph 1, 2, 3, or 4, township will provide written notice to the human resource director advising of what it believes will be the grounds for such cause." And it's, that's a defined term in the contract. "And it will provide human resource director a 10-day period to cure said cause, provided said cause is capable of being cured." That got three question marks from me, which is unusual. Could you explain how those seemingly inconsistent provisions work and what, whether or not it opens the township to litigation for a just cause claim by the HR director, who I have no belief or reason to believe will ever avail himself of the language of that contract, but it's due diligence, I need to ask the question.
Yeah, good question. So the position of the human resources director is at-well at all times. Whether or not cause is found as part of the termination decision just reflects on whether or not the individual will be capable of collecting a severance and whether or not certain H, I'm sorry, payroll, PTO payouts will be applicable. And so the finding of cause just is relevant as to whether or not certain payments will be made, not as to whether or not a termination can be enforced.
Doesn't he have those rights irrespective of that language?
No. So under Michigan law, there is no right to a PTO payout of accrued but unused paid time off at the time of separation unless there is a company policy or a township policy or a written contract to the contrary. And so here we are specifying under what, under what conditions a PTO payout would be appropriate. And then similarly, with a severance payment, a Michigan employee is not entitled to a severance payment. If you were to do a severance payment, it's typically in conjunction with a release of all claims.
Where does that language come into the contract of PTO? I didn't see that. It just basically generally went into paragraph six on page four. Is, is that delineated specifically that this relates to PTO and other benefits, or is it just implicit?
So paragraph 4.2 refers to the time string which a PTO payout would be appropriate. And then paragraph seven defines when payment upon termination, meaning that severance payment would be appropriate.
Excuse me, I'm sorry it's taking me so long to scan that. It typed a, okay. Also, I have another question regarding disability as defined. Is that ADA and Michigan law compliant?
No, it is compliant. It is a relatively standard definition of disability. It is, the definition there is different than what is considered a disabled individual under the ADA or Michigan state law equivalent. But the inability to work for that length of time is a standard inclusion in an employment agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions on the contract, although I do have several questions for the committee members regarding the.
Certainly, but before you get to that, Mr. Cusamano, can I, can I interject something real quick?
Sure. I yield the floor.
Tabaka, how are you?
I'm well. How are you?
All right, I'm sorry, Rebecca, I was speaking to Mr. Tabaka.
Okay.
I thought you said Tabaka. All right, I'm doing well.
Rebecca was so excited to answer for you that she got jumped right in. You and I spoke about the contract. In fact, you asked some questions about the very same language. You reviewed it with your attorney. Are you satisfied as to the terms of the contract that is presented for tonight?
Yeah, like I said a couple of days ago, I looked through it, and I was comfortable with it, and I accepted it. Correct.
That's really all I wanted to get to. Thank you, Mr. Tabaka.
You're welcome.
Please continue, Mr. Cusamano.
I was curious why the offer exceeded the minimum salary range that was in the application. It wasn't by very much, a couple thousand dollars, but I was curious as to the basis for that inconsistency. Why wouldn't the township have offered the minimum range with a bonus provision or similar provision to be upon satisfactory probationary period?
I, the three of us did speak about the offer before it was presented. Ultimately, we, you know, we looked at not just what Mr. Tabaka had put down as his requested, but what we thought the market value was for the position. We looked at, we had the benefit of looking at all the candidates, what their range requests were, so we got a pretty good idea of what the market value was based on his experience and his abilities, and I'll let the other two committee members wait if they choose to. But we thought 102 as a base salary was very fair, given his experience levels.
Mr. Chair, if I may, also, we wanted to make sure it was competitive so that it would be an offer that Mr. Tabaka couldn't refuse.
Trustee Nevers, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, I agree 100% with Clerk Posey on that one. Thank you.
And regarding the term of the four weeks paid off in Section 4.2 going to five weeks, how was that determined? Is that also?
That was my suggestion. I reviewed our various labor agreement contracts and also what we have in place for our other non-represented employees. I thought it was consistent with what someone who was effectively at a director-level position would be making. And in fact, the ASME contract on the very top end actually has more paid time off than what Mr. Tabaka has agreed to after 10 years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my review and questions on this matter. Thank you. And thank you to the review committee, selection committee for their hard work.
Any other discussions on this motion? Okay, hearing none. There is a motion, I wrote down, by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to authorize the supervisor to engage in employment contract with Jeff Tabata for our, to be our human resources director. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes? Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, the motion carries. Welcome aboard, Mr. Tabata.
All right, I'm honored, believe me. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your time. I know it's a HR cliche that you have to be a people person, but I think in a very short time, you will see that with me, so thank you again.
We appreciate it, and I'm sure we'll talk tomorrow, and we'll get things underway.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you for joining us.
Yes, no problem.
Yes. Thank you.
That is the last item we have to deal with tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? So move.
Support.
Is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none, Clerk Posey, will you please, there is a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, please call the roll.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes? Supervisor Viviano?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
The motion carries, and this meeting is adjourned.
Good day.
Thank you. Goodbye.